The meeting is hereby called to order. We will begin with the Act of Reverence and Pledge Allegiance to the Flag led by Commissioner Williams.
(Inaudible)
We will now, we have, we have one set of minutes from August 27th, 2009. These minutes were sent to you in your packet, so you all have had the opportunity to read them. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Move by Vice President Weiss. There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campos. All in favor of selecting the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. We will now move to student recognition. I would like to, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize students for their artistic talent and their artwork in this year's calendar. If everyone has seen the calendar, with, all that artwork was done by students. We have some amazing, amazing artists in this district, so give them a round of applause. And I would like to introduce Deborah Harloff, who's Executive Director of Visual and Performing Arts, and Tom Petronio to come up to the podium to recognize our students. And then I'll ask my colleagues to come down on the floor so we can congratulate our students as they get their certificates. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tom Petronio, I'm with the Communications Department for the school district. Each year we produce the calendar that goes out to each and every parent and staff member in our district. And for the last three years, we've been featuring wonderful, wonderful artwork by the students from our schools. It's always a challenge to narrow down the submissions to the 14 or 15 that we feature in the calendar each year, but I think anyone that's seen this knows what a beautiful piece it really is, and that's all the result of the hard work of our students and the art teachers in our schools. Debbie?
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. We all know that the arts are an important part of the education of a well-rounded student, so we're really, really happy to have our students' artwork recognized in the calendar every month. I also wanted to point out that a number of our students will be featured tonight at the City Hall Awards Ceremony, because we partnered with the City of Rochester for the Hispanic Heritage Exhibit that is there, and eight of our students are there this evening being recognized for their outstanding work. So that's quite an honor. So we're gonna call the students' names who have work in this year's calendar, and please come forward to receive your certificate. We have Sherrell G. from School Without Walls, 7 and 8. Is she here this evening? No. Shakyla Jemson from School Without Walls, 9 through 12. No. Ashley Morales from School 45. Amy Lynn from School of the Arts. I know Amy's here, we were talking earlier. Amy, come on up and point out your work also, please. Do you wanna go stand by your work, too? Point that out, because nobody will know which one is yours. A number of our students were seniors last year, so they've gone on to college, so they were not able to make it, but I'd like to read their names to you, and if one of their parents are here, or the teacher's here, please step forward. Oh, let me just point out, too, Alana Wilcox is here to pick up the award for Ashley... no, Jessica Or...
Jessica.
For Jessica Uttenier. Jessica is being recognized this evening at City Hall. That's Jessica's work. The other students that are recognized in the calendar are Ruth DeCastro from Monroe, Jonathan Sahara from East High School, Nicholas Ficklin from East High School, Katie Tiedemann from East High School, Jovan Santos from Wilson Commencement, Pamita Adique Perry from Wilson Commencement, Ashley Shim from School Without Walls, 9 through 12, Christian Allen from School Number Two, who is now at Charlotte, and Jamaris Quinones from Monroe. So congratulations to all of their stu-, those students. Thank you.
Thank you again to the art teachers, as well as the students and their parents for all their hard work with, with the art that was in the calendar. I, I think that some of that art is, can be sold in an art store. I mean, it's really great work, and I want to thank the students for all their hard work. We, we will now move to speakers addressing an agenda item. We have six speakers, so I'm gonna call all the speakers under this one section, and not make people wait until the end. So I'll start with, our first speaker will be Felix Jacobs, and Felix Jacobs will be followed by Brenda Ramos. Mr. Jacobs? And each speaker will have three minutes, and when you hear the beep, 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 just conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Bazzard, Commissioners. Reason I'm here today is to talk about, is transportation. And due to the fact I know that facts go a long way down here, I wanted to give some of the facts that exist out in the suburbs for picking up their children. Fairport, K through 6, bus transportation. Gates Charlie, K through 5, bus transportation. Rush Enneretta, all, all children are picked up. Going to Pittsford Central District, all children are picked up. Over the past two weeks, there have been many parents that have approached me and my colleague over there concerning this new bus transportation policy. And had we known, when we were told that the transportation policy was gonna be saving $5 million by kicking our children off the bus, I doubt very seriously if that resolution would have passed. Be it may, some people may feel that all children should go to their home schools, but this district is in year seven of a district in need of improvement. Forty percent of our schools still do not meet adequate yearly process, progress. In the suburbs, no district is in need of improvement, and they're buzzing all of their children. The only question I have to ask to you is, do they love their kids more in the suburbs and outlying areas than we love our kids? And is it not possible to find a way to revisit this policy and stop those young children in kindergarten from fighting down the streets to get to school? Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Ramos?
Good afternoon. My concern is about the city school kids, they gotta walk in the snow. When the winter get here, kindergarten to 6th grade, I seen it, and I've been there. My kids gotta walk from a farther, for a farther distance, fighting through the streets because of those, the sidewalks, I'm not even shovel yet. And my concern is, how these kids are safe in the streets when going to school? All I want to know to see if we can fix that, because we do need the transportation for these kids. Is anything that we can do about it? That's my comment.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Duhart, Ms. Duhart here? Michelle Duhart? Okay. Elaine Francesco, is she here? And Elaine will be followed by James Dumphy.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Francesco, and I am an active parent in the district. I have spoken here a number of times about issues that concern parents and detrimentally affect students. While I agree in principle with most of the policies Mr. Bazzard has instituted since his arrival, I have disagreed strongly with the lack of forethought from him and Broad Street on implementation. So tonight, Commissioners, you are all sitting. The audience is seated also. Mr. Bazzard, you are sitting down. It's a good thing, because I'm about to shock you all. Mr. Bazzard, well done. Good job. In creating this new full-boat scholarship partnership with RIT for city school students, you have done a great thing. For the students, for their families, and ultimately for the future of the City of Rochester, it is indeed hope. College is now an almost universal requirement, and middle-class families are terrified. We lay awake at night worrying about how to send even one child to college without saddling them or ourselves with massive loans. Last year's economic disaster, the stock market debacle, the continuing repercussions on employment aggravate the situation. As the mother of a senior, who, by the way, will not qualify due to income, I have had an upset stomach for months and expect to continue through next September at least. And we are blessed in that my husband works at RIT, so she can go there or a reciprocal school. She plans to major in musical theater. I want her to minor in plumbing. Parents laugh and then nod when I say that, she rolls her eyes, but skilled trades have been a foundation of our nation and are still a valid factor in America's future. You can't outsource plumbing. So while you and the district continue to build these incredible partnerships with area colleges, let us not forget the students who want to work with their hands in a skilled trade. The accomplishment and satisfaction of craftsmanship should not be discounted. But that is an aside. The original partnership with U of R and now this new partnership with RIT make the impossible possible for a generation of city students who will now attend world-class college instead of the school of, do you want fries with that? Again, Mr. Bazzard, well done.
Is Mr., is, is James Dumphy here? Mr. Dumphy? Mr. Dumphy was gonna talk about the Singapore motto of teaching? I was looking forward to that. Is Charlie Richardson here? Now Charlie Richardson left, left me a message, so I know he's gotta be here. He's not here? Wow, okay. That concludes our, our speakers portion of the agenda. We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Colleagues, if I may ask you to please sit up front, we actually have a presentation. I'll try to make it quick. While we are waiting for the screen to get, to actually get ready, I just wanna say to Ms. Francesco, please wait for our presentation. Hopefully we'll address some of the stuff you talked about. I think this was actually timely, we didn't plan this. I also do not usually respond to some of the speakers, but I don't wanna make a statement about transportation. We did not save $5 million to those our kids on the street. The issues around suburban versus cities transporting kids is really a state issue, not really one of district policy. The state has guidelines, I believe it's two miles or one and a half miles for kids to be picked up. We did not create that. In fact, what we've been doing with the electeds is pushing and asking, can we keep the $5 million in future years to actually transport pre-K kids into schools? As you know, we do not or cannot pick up pre-K kids. Those we do, we actually have to find monies elsewhere to actually make that happen. The UPK program, which is a multi, multi, multi-million dollar program in New York State, does not allow for full day, does not allow for transportation. That is something that we've been fighting for, and if you don't know, transportation is a reimbursable item, which means that the $5 million we save this year, we will not get next year. We'll be, we'll lose $5 million in next fiscal year. What we've asked the state to do is please allow us to keep that money so we can begin to transport kids while the age of five, who are walking a mile and a half in the snow and the ice. Again, it's not a Rochester issue, it is a New York State city issue. Suburb is allowed to levy taxes to, to close those gaps. We cannot do that as a city schools, we're not fiscally independent. There's something really we all should, should understand. As we lobby the, the electeds, we can talk much more about that. Before I also get into the PowerPoint, I also want to talk a little bit about the opening of school, Commissioners and, and ladies and gentlemen. Despite the predictions of mayhem and chaos because of the budget issues that we had this past year, our schools opened relatively well, thanks to our staff and our leaders in our schools did a phenomenal job. In one, opening a brand-new school at 33 on Congress Avenue. Buildings were clean, our, our facilities focused in the Yomen's job in making sure our schools are open. We now have 21 elementary schools and eight secondary schools who wear school uniform. I don't mandate that schools do this, but as a former student who wore uniforms in elementary school, I think it's a wonderful thing, and would love to see more schools do that. But 21 of our elementary schools, eight secondary schools actually make this happen. Our administrators were highly visible, they were there picking up kids. If you wanna see, I guess, a great workaround coordination, take a look at School 33 and what they do with their buses, four-deep, and they do an amazing job of getting kids to classes on time. Our ESL teachers were there for ELL kids, kids who don't speak English, to make sure they were welcome into schools. School Resource Officers did an amazing job of being friendly and interact, interacting with our kids. We had some issues around buses running late. As you know, we went to a massive reorganization in transportation in this multi-tiered system. Despite the massive change, the issues were minor, those have been, are being and have been ironed out. We, we put in place for the first time, as you know, new X-ray machines at high schools to scan for weapons that kids may be bringing to schools. In some cases, we had long lines because of that, and those are being ironed out. We just ordered a second X-ray machine for East High School, for instance, because a lot of kids go into East. So overall, thank you to our staff, thank you to our leaders, thank you to our folks here at Central Office, an amazing opening for schools. I want to talk briefly about, about our college readiness initiative. RIT did a phenomenal thing for us, as you heard earlier on, about providing full scholarships for our kids, and this was the piece of the press release that was issued a few days ago. You should also know that U of R provides $25,000 for any student who can get into U of R from any school in the, in the district, and there are other scholarships throughout the district. But we feel the RIT is really one step beyond, because I remember a conversation with Commissioner White last year, perhaps almost two years ago, talking about the U of R piece, saying $25,000 is a phenomenal thing for university, but for poor kids, even coming up with a difference, is still a tremendous task that they have to, to overcome. So the fact is that the full tuition is a phenomenal thing. Now we have to make sure our kids know it exists, prepare for it, and actually get in, and understand college is a reachable goal. We've had a campaign being planned for a while, about to be pushed, even heavier this year. We provided AVID last year across the district. AVID used to exist only at East High School, now it's in every high school in the district. AVID is an acronym that stands for advancement via individual determination. It targets kids who are in the academic middle. We provided AVID coordinators to schools, college trips, et cetera. Last year, you may recall, we had our first PSAT for all across the district. Every single 10th and 11th, 11th grader took the PSAT, which provides for, in some cases, merit scholarships, and now there's just a mailing they get from colleges. We had our first ever citywide college and career fair last year at the sports complex, I believe in, in Enneretta, it was Charlie, I forgot which of the suburbs. We're gonna repeat that again this year in later, in mid-October, the all-day college fair, including PSAT for every single student. This campaign, you're gonna begin to see on bus signs. I know that Marilyn and her team, and Tim Clibby, and Jerome, our new head of IT, are gonna put these screensavers on our computers in every school in the district. So subliminal messages going to kids about striving for, for college. Tonight, there's a resolution on the books for the Board of Education to consider a proposal to bring a group called Simply College to the district to work with parents and guidance counselors to train them about making sure kids understand, and parents understand financial aid applications, et cetera, on how the process of getting into, into college. The one big piece, of course, we all have to work on is the academic preparation of our kids, so when they get there, they can get in in one stay, because we know that statewide, we have an issue with African-American and Latino students actually getting in college and staying in college. Only 13% of every African-American Latino who enter a college in the state stay a second year. Some because of financial reasons, some because of academic reasons. We got a much better job of making this happen. So these pictures show you the kind of message we're trying to begin to send to our kids and begin to see, again, on, on bus ads, in TVs, et cetera, across the district. Really wonderful stuff to show you, the wonderful work coming from our schools. We love these pictures, some of them actually now in front of the, the days for the Board of Education. Here's, I would like to take quite five minutes to watch this. So you may be asking what this is. Before, before you clarify, if I may, bring up Ken Warner, Matt Laniac, Matty, you here? Ken, please come up. If we have students from Edison, please bring them up. Guys, come up, come up, come up, come up. Melissa, please come. Melissa. Come forward, ladies and gentlemen, come forward, come forward. Talk about this.
Okay, I guess I have to talk about this. Yeah, it, it just started as an idea last year. We, we partnered with Unicon and, and Ken Warner, who represents a lot of the local labor unions and construction companies. And we kind of said, you know, we have all these students doing these great things in the classroom, but we, we never get to see it go together. So how can we accomplish this? And I don't know, somehow it came, let's build a house. So there we go. So we're, we're building this house, and we're kind of figuring it out as we go, but it's been a long process, but it is really moving along now. And part of the, the, the great part of this project is, the students that are working on the house are actually sort of doing this as a co-op. So not only did they learn the skills in the classroom, now they're applying the skills from what they learned in the classroom in the field, but they also work past the school day, so we're able to pay them a stipend as well. So they're actually seeing, if I work, I earn, and I give back to society, and, and so it's, it's really a great thing. I don't know, Michael, you wanna say anything? I'll, I'll let you say a few words, you've been...
Yes, I am proud to work on the house. It lets me explore more than my shop class that I take up. I take up masonry, I'm also learning carpentry, I'm soon to be learning electrical and plumbing. And also, we work with people from the union, and they show us step by step how we'll go about process, different ways to go about the situation, to help complete our goal in finishing the house.
I didn't start working on the house until the summer, but when I, when I started the school, they just put me right on the house, asked me if I wanted to do it, and I just started. And like he said, I will be lurking on electrical. My shop is actually electrical, so I'll get a lot of one-on-one with my teacher when I'm working on electrical, and that's what we came up with.
We have everybody working on it, so maybe you want to say a couple of quick words?
I've been working on the house since last year, when we first started the house project, and I think it's a very good experience, because I learned a lot of new things I haven't learned before, and I really like it, it's a good experience. Thank you.
Just last, last person could be possible without Ken Warner, but Ken?
Well, for those of you who know me, I seldom don't have anything to say. And so given this opportunity, I'm gonna tell you something, hopefully quickly. You know, a lot of people have complaints about our school system and our school district, and a few years ago, one of the things that was very popular to do was everybody complained about the teachers, that the reason why our kids aren't graduating this, that, and the other thing is because of our teachers. And then when that didn't, what proved not to be true, what they did was, they said, well, you know what, students, they're, the students are this, the students are that, students are the other thing. Fact of the matter is that I walked into Edison a couple of years ago and found the brightest, the smartest, the most hard-working...
125,000 in population, which are the big five, we are not required to provide transportation at all, except for students with disabilities. Everything else, it's done, it's a convenience. Okay?
It could be.
All right. And for us, we decided on the 1.5 strictly as a way to, and again, to maximize revenue as opposed to either safety or state law or, or anything else, which, I mean, is fine, except if that's a model we have. The problem with that is, you know, you basically say, look, if you aren't, if you're less than 1.5, then, you know, for the most part, you aren't worth much to us, which, which is a big problem, a big issue. And I think that's the problem that a lot of our parents are having, at least from the calls that I get and emails that I get about the 1.5. Not so much, they don't know much about the reimbursement piece, but...
But the one issue, Commissioner, that we should also understand, this is not a new situation in the city. We have 6,000 kids who actually walk to school. It's been like that for many, many years. I mean, this district can always make a decision. To transport 6,000 kids would mean a substantial sum and would mean cutting vastly in other places as well. So I know that, in some places anyway, they're looking at two miles as a minimum versus the 1.5. The one thing I will always argue is that, and I argue all the time when I go to Albany, looking at funding issues, I always say, as a state, we fund, we have enough money, we just don't spend it well. Because when you take a look at the fact that UPK should come with transportation, should be full day, is something that we often argue for, unfortunately, on deaf ears whenever we go to Albany. And having five-year-olds walking a mile, or for that matter, quarter of a mile in the snow is unfair. But it's something that I think we all struggle with, especially in places where you don't have the kind of transportation that you have, for instance, in places like New York City.
Okay. But then, just want to make sure, clarify. So the 1.5 really, that we, the 1.5 rule we have in place now, it's more a matter of board policy as opposed to state law? And if the board wanted to, for the most part, either...
We could transport every kid. The board could say, we want to transport every kid if we wanted to. The question is, where the funds come from? There was one point when I was chair of the CIGR committee, we, we were trying to, we were going to Albany not only to ask for pre-K, we were trying to explore what we could do to get more money to transport every kid. But I mean, from a financial perspective, it's virtually impossible, because you wouldn't be reimbursed from the state if you're, if you're transporting every kid, unless they gave us more funds. If they gave us more funds, we could transport every kid in the district.
Commissioner, if you remember, too, I remember that right before I came to Rochester, interim superintendent Cala was actually trying to present legislation, never got anywhere in Albany as well. Because what, what the state will tell you is that if they make an exception for Rochester, they got to do it for every city in New York State, and they're not about to do that.
Okay. Right, but I mean, but if we found the money, or if we said, instead of whatever it costs, say, to transport all of our kindergartners or all of our first graders through fifth graders, if we found the money and that came up to three million dollars, if we found the money somewhere else...
It'd be much more than three, but...
Yeah, whatever, whatever it is, I mean...
As long, as long as, as long as the board is willing to accept the cuts in other places, and that's something that's always up for debate, so...
But the one thing, I mean, if I was going to push for anything, and I don't want to make this a long drawn-out conversation, it would be the pre-K piece, first for me. Only, you know, I'm liaison to the pre-K program, so I have a little, little bit of a bias there. But to me, it just makes no sense for three and four-year-olds to be, to be walking, so...
Or five, or seven.
But, but it is a function of dollars.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Commissioner Powell?
Just on the same topic, I do want to provide the historical perspective. Any board decision to make a mile and a half is far before my time, so it's long, more than 10 years. In fact, when I came on the board, there was a several-year-old blue-ribbon panel from the Center for Governmental Research that was recommending a larger circumference that would be more than a mile and a half. I don't remember if the recommendation was for two miles or two and a half, but it was specifically referencing whatever the limits of state reimbursement is, and obviously the specific goal was to reduce cost, reduce the number of yellow buses. The, there are aspects of this that we could have a conversation about in conjunction with the school choice policy that could provide some of the trade-off. For instance, we still provide legacy busing across zones for students whose families move out of the zone. At some point, the cost becomes prohibitive to, to take one, two, three children from, throughout a zone and bring them to 12 other schools in a different zone. We probably need to have a conversation about ending the grandfather clause, so that when parents make a decision to move, they need to think long in the heart about where they move to and whether they want to continue to be in, to keep their kids in the school that should influence their moving decision, so that they move to another location within the zone rather than jumping across zone boundaries. That can be, that could potentially provide all of the money that we need to shrink the walk zone to something less than a mile and a half. But that, I think, needs to happen in a context. And like any budget conversation, where does the money come from? Show me where you're going to find the savings to make that happen. There, there are ways to make it happen, but it can't be done in isolation of other policies. While I have the floor, I'd like to make a comment about the presentation on the construction trades. Ken Warner's not here yet anymore, but I do want to put it on the record, he gave credit to this superintendent for helping to make this happen, and that's true. We went through three superintendents before this that gave lip service to the trades, gave lip service to conversations with the building trades, but it just never happened. The other thing, though, and he was rather self-effacing, was the other thing that happened about the same time that Jean-Claude came in as a superintendent, was Ken Warner took the lead of Unicon. And so I think we finally got the right two people at the table talking to each other, and I think that was the really, the breakthrough we needed to make this happen. It's something we've been talking about for 10 years. Other board members, Rob Brown and some other of our predecessors have talked about this, couldn't seem to make it a priority. And now it's finally happened, and so kudos to yourself. And for Ken Warner, who isn't watching TV either probably yet, a big thank you to him as well.
We should thank you. Also want to thank the city of Rochester for donating the land that was used to build the house. And also to the legal team, Chuck is here with Rochester, because they had to do a lot of research and jump through hoops, because as you can well imagine, having minors on the construction side and the liabilities of making sure, very often we don't think about those small things, but finding the education laws that we can leverage to make this a reality was, 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 was awesome. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent regarding his report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to board reports. Let's start with our student representative reports. Ms. DeLos, welcome to your, to your senior year.
Thanks, guys.
Now, you're going to graduate on time, right? We need a graduation rate?
Yes, I'm going to graduate on time. It's that, I have to say, senior year is not what I thought it would have been, being in a high school for six years, in a high school with changing leadership and changing the culture. I mean, it's just, I've loved to see that the school has really become the way it was when I first started out. The administration has really pushed to make the school the best, but I just really didn't think that all this work would be piling up on me senior year. I'm like, I thought I'd have like four free periods, I'd get to leave early. Yeah, right. Anyway, moving on, I wanted to say congratulations again to Mr. Bresard for making that partnership with RIT. I for sure am going to take advantage of it, and I hope the rest of our CSD seniors out there look into it, especially with the recession that we are in. SLC met yesterday, September 23rd, and what was interesting about yesterday's meeting is I, when I met with Tom last week, on, Tom Petronio, on how to start this meeting, I was really unsure, because we were coming in from a year where we weren't sure how many new kids we were going to get in the first meeting. And just as, I don't know, as most of you know, when you have a committee, it could, eventually they can start out, your numbers can start out big, and then they can diminish, which is really hard. So yeah, yesterday was very interesting, was I had SLC try something new. And what they did was called, an activity called Wordstorm. I wrote a word up on the board, and then they had to shout out a number of words within three minutes that pertain to the, what they thought of that word. So when I wrote "school," I've got, I had so many words, such as attendance, safety, suspensions, you know, grade reports, parent-teacher conferences, everything. And it was interesting that, that the biggest concern that our kids were talking about yesterday was safety. And going back to this, I, I was having a conversation with SLC, and they said that it's not so much, they feel that there's, that they are safe, but it always changes. You know, there's, they feel safe at a certain time, or there have been times where they don't feel that they're safe, and that they don't feel that they have the support sometimes that can help them, or they're afraid to go to those kinds of supports to help them through their situations. So that was extremely interesting, and we have come up with a number of ideas to talk about possibly meeting with principals for a roundtable, Jim Shepherd for a roundtable, and things of that nature. Our other ideas for projects for this year include a partnership with, like Rochester School for the Deaf on a PSA, as well as a school out in the suburbs. Maybe to talk about, we've talked about with the safety issue, we wanted to talk to a suburban school about how they felt about their safety and kind of maybe do a comparison and see what that's like, just to try something new. We've talked about working at the soup kitchen, doing PSAs, and SLC will be present for the reach-out on Tuesday. So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And colleagues, if I can have you step down one more time, we had some students show up for their artwork to congratulate them. Sorry. She's not present, though, with us, so we can give her a hand. Are you Amber? Sherrell Gee School Without Walls Foundation, grade nine, showed up with her family, and she is one of the calendar artists. While I have the floor, I'd like to make a comment about the presentation on the construction trades. Ken Warner's not here yet anymore, but I do want to put it on the record. He gave credit to this superintendent for helping to make this happen, and that's true. We went through three superintendents before this that gave lip service to the trades, gave lip service to conversations with the building trades, but it just never happened. The other thing, though, and he was rather self-effacing, was the other thing that happened about the same time that Jean-Claude came in as a superintendent was Ken Warner took the lead of Unicon. And so I think we finally got the right two people at the table talking to each other. And I think that was the really, the breakthrough we needed to make this happen. It's something we've been talking about for 10 years. Other board members, Rob Brown and some other of our predecessors have talked about this, couldn't seem to make it a priority. And now it's finally happened, and so kudos to yourself. And for Ken Warner, who isn't watching TV either probably yet, a big thank you to him as well.
We should thank you. Also want to thank the city of Rochester for donating the land that was used to build the house. And also to the legal team, Chuck is here with Rochester, because they had to do a lot of research and jump through hoops. Because as you can well imagine, having miners on the construction site and the liabilities of making sure, very often we don't think about those small things. But finding the education laws that we can leverage to make this a reality was awesome. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent regarding his report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to board reports. Let's start with our student representative reports. Ms. De Los, welcome to your senior year.
Thanks, Josh.
Now, you're going to graduate on time, right? We need a graduation rate.
Yes, I'm going to graduate on time. I have to say, senior year is not what I thought it would have been. Being in a high school for six years, in a high school with changing leadership and changing the culture. I mean, it's just, I've loved to see that the school has really become the way it was when I first started out. The administration has really pushed to make the school the best. But I just really didn't think that all this work would be piling up on me senior year. I'm like, I thought I'd have like four free periods. I'd get to leave early. Yeah, right. Anyway, moving on. I wanted to say congratulations again to Mr. Bresard for making that partnership with RIT. I for sure am going to take advantage of it, and I hope the rest of RCSD seniors out there look into it, especially with the recession that we are in. SLC met yesterday, September 23rd. And what was interesting about yesterday's meeting is I, when I met with Tom last week, Tom Petronio, on how to start this meeting, I was really unsure because we were coming in from a year where we weren't sure how many new kids we were going to get in the first meeting. And just as, I don't know, as most of you know, when you have a committee, it could, eventually, they can start out, your numbers can start out big, and then they can diminish, which is really hard. So yeah, yesterday was very interesting was I had SLC try something new. And what they did was called, an activity called Wordstorm. I wrote a word up on the board, and then they had to shout out a number of words within three minutes that pertain to the, what they thought of that word. So when I wrote "school," I've got, I had so many words such as attendance, safety, suspensions, you know, grade reports, parent-teacher conferences, everything. And it was interesting that the biggest concern that our kids were talking about yesterday was safety. And going back to this, I was having a conversation with SLC, and they said that it's not so much, they feel that there's, that they are safe, but it always changes. You know, there's, they feel safe at a certain time, or there have been times where they don't feel that they're safe and that they don't feel that they have the support sometimes that can help them. Or they're afraid to go to those kinds of supports to help them through their situations. So that was extremely interesting. And we have come up with a number of ideas to talk about, possibly meeting with principals for a roundtable, Jim Shepherd for a roundtable, and things of that nature. Our other ideas for projects for this year include a partnership with, like Rochester School for the Deaf on a PSA, as well as a school out in the suburbs. Maybe to talk about, we've talked about with the safety issue, we wanted to talk to a suburban school about how they felt about their safety and kind of maybe do a comparison and see what that's like, just to try something new. We've talked about working at the soup kitchen, doing PSAs. And SLC will be present for the reach-out on Tuesday. So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And colleagues, if I can have you step down one more time. We had some students show up for their artwork to congratulate them. Sorry. Our first student is Amber Hart, and she's actually from Marshall. She's not present though with us, so we can give her a hand. Are you Amber? Sherrell Gee School Without Walls Foundation, grade nine, showed up with her family, and she is one of the calendar artists. I don't have it. I don't have it. I have this, another person on here.
He's the guy in the purple shirt.
Congratulations. Yeah, go yell at him. And a mother, the mother of Shakila Johnson from East High School, who's now in college. All right. All right. Thank you. You can take your seats, and that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to board reports, starting with Commissioner Williams and the Audit Committee.
Mr. President, the Audit Committee did not meet in the month of neither August nor September.
Thank you. Our next meeting is November... Fourth, for the claims audit. I mean, for the external auditors.
External auditors, yes. Yes.
Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 17th. We reviewed the monthly financial reports. You have it in front of you, and I, at this moment, move that the board accept the minutes.
There's a...
I'm sorry, accept the financial reports.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Powell to accept the August financial reports. Is there a second? Second by Vice President White. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Okay.
Question, comment.
Comment.
On the report itself, and I know for the, our current controller, this is something that you have, this format is something that you have, you inherited from your predecessor or predecessors. But if you would, and the first thing, I direct you to something called Section 170 of the Commissioners' Regulation, which really sets out the format in terms of what should be presented, especially when it comes to the Budget Status Report, the Cash Flow Projections, the Fund Balance Projection, and the Cash Recacquiation. Because as, the current format we have now, it's from, as a management tool, it's tough to decipher just where we are, both on a year-to-date basis and on a monthly basis.
Yes, it is, and we are changing that. We've been working on a different template to follow along with what the regulations state. So it is in the works. We just haven't, and I'm hoping to turn that up for the next month. But it is something we have been working on.
Okay. Ah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, so the regular business of the committee included Resolutions 234 through 240 and 266 through 271. These include two procurement resolutions, two instructional technology resolutions, and three educational facilities resolutions, one Office Administration and one other, which is for data storage and in order to meet state requirements. The committee advances all of the resolutions that it was presented with. And our next Finance Committee meeting will be October 13th at 5:30 PM. And while I have the floor, I want to commend all of the teachers and principals this week who are having open houses. I went to three open houses in three days, and I can tell you both the teachers, administrators, and parents are working overtime this week.
Thank you. Vice President White and the ESA, AKA Excellence in Students Achievement.
I think you're getting better at that. It's the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee. Yes, indeed, we met on September the 10th at 5:30 PM. And I want to thank Commissioner Campos for wearing a couple hats that night. She was going back and forth so we would have a quorum. Commissioner Williams had other commitments, so he wasn't able to attend the meeting. But fortunately, Commissioner Campos was able to allow us to have a quorum. We met, and actually, it was a very interesting meeting. And I would really encourage my colleagues to encourage the administration to provide a presentation similar to the one we had because the materials that Ms. Morgan was kind enough to make sure that all board members have don't really give you a sense as to the quality of presentation, the quality of work that the administration has provided with respect to what is called the RTI Program. It's an acronym, I guess, for Response to Intervention. It is what many of us have been waiting for, for decades from this administration. How do we prevent our children from going into this special ed or suspension pipeline that many of our kids never return from? It really was exciting. I just can't emphasize enough. And I think I said to Ms. Patterson-Grant that it would be great if the rest of my colleagues could actually see this presentation. There was, not to draw special attention to any particular person, but there was one employee, Caterina Leon Manino? Manino. And I know a lot of people put a lot of good work into this, but Ms. Morgan is over there smiling because she, and I don't know, you weren't there during that time. But it was a phenomenal presentation. I, at the end of the presentation, I said, "Where have you been all my life?" Because she apparently was at Franklin Finance or something like that. And she came into this job working with Marilyn. And I, again, I want to say, I know a lot of people put a lot of good work into this. And again, I would not do justice in describing this program for you all. So really, I would ask that the administration provide an opportunity for my colleagues, maybe at the beginning of a business meeting, because this is how we're going to further increase our graduation rate. I'm convinced of it. Also, there was a presentation regarding the college-going home, college-going culture campaign. You all have seen the photographs and the posters. This is, again, the next step for those of us who want to see this district continue to be an example of what an urban district can be like. We have to go beyond just saying our kids are going to graduate from high school. And we're doing that. But once we get to a point where our kids are successfully flipping their tassels, we want to make sure that there's another tassel in their future, and that's a college degree. I think somebody said earlier on, if you don't go to a trade school and become proficient and effective in some trade, you definitely have to go to college. And we've got to get our kids in that mindset. And I think this campaign is a wonderful notion. Even putting this notion of going to college in our kindergarten kids' minds, this is a powerful concept that I think its time has come. Marilyn Patterson-Grant and Brandon Keviny? Keviny provided information regarding the impact of smaller class sizes and larger, versus larger class sizes. This is only the beginning of the dialogue that Excellence in Student Achievement is going to have on this subject. It is a hot topic. We received some information from the administration, quite a bit, actually. And as a result of that presentation, we extended an invitation to Alliance for Quality Education. These folks have sponsored and have encouraged this administration to reduce class size. And actually, they have a proposal that I think Commissioner Williams was one of the people, it might have been Commissioner Elliott, that maybe we ought to cap class sizes. And I'm not sure if that was you. I thought that was you that put the proposal forward and sent it on to different committees, but I might be wrong. Somebody did. And it is now before a number of our committees, and including the Excellence in Student Achievement. We will deliberate over that proposal. And part of our deliberation will include a presentation at our next ESA meeting, which is October the 8th. That's a Thursday at 5:30 PM. AQE will have the floor. They will be making a presentation. I hope to have the administration there so that they can respond to what these folks have to say. Folks out there don't know this, AQE is very big on small class sizes, and they believe they have the data to support them. And I know there are folks in the administration that say that's not altogether accurate, but this is good. A democracy has people engaging in vigorous and respectful dialogue, and we'll get some of that. That is October the 8th at 5:30 PM. This is the topic, and I would encourage anybody who's got any interest in it to attend that meeting. And the citizens are going to have the floor. That is my report. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Oh, and also, I should mention, on that day, we're going to have, the Chinese program will be presented as well. Ms. Morgan, thank you for your diligence in preparing this report, and that's the end of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos and the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
The CIGR Committee did not meet this month, however. The Committee is hosting its first community conversation, which is called the RCSD Speak, Reach Out. Not speak out, reach out. It's this Tuesday, September 29th at East High School. It'll be from 6:30 to 8:30. The Board of Ed members were going to be there. Representatives from the district, from the different departments and programs will also be on hand to talk with parents, answer questions, and provide assistance. I've actually been on the phone with three different parents this week that have been having issues with their kids, and I've referred them to this actual meeting. So they're going to be coming. So it's a great way for us to be representative for our parents because sometimes it's very difficult for our parents to navigate through the system. And it's much easier to have that one-on-one conversation with the parent face to face. So we have to do a good job. We have great programs. We have great things that are going on in the district. We need to, A, make sure that our parents know about them, but B, make sure that we're there to service our parents. So this is just one avenue to be able to provide that. And we'll be looking for other ways to be able to do that. And we'll be continuously doing this once a quarter through CIGR. I would like to thank both Jackie Morgan and Tom Petronio, especially Jackie, because she has put in so much tireless effort and the passion that she has for this actual event is just absolutely fantastic. So thank you, Jackie, and Tom, for his services and getting the word out because obviously, we have to be able to get the word out in order to get parents to come. So this is what we've been able to do thus far. We've had a news release issued out twice, automated phone message, which was sent out twice, ads placed in the city and minority reporter, spots running on DKX, and also flyers in English and Spanish that were sent to parent liaisons and parent centers, announcement posted on the RCSD website. There's a TV spot running on Student First and a TV spot posted online on SchoolTube. I would also like to thank our committee, which consists of Commissioner Brennan and also Commissioner Elliott for agreeing to this and seeing that it is a good idea. And also want to thank Commissioner White because we will be on the watercooler tomorrow morning. So thank you. And also, we are in the process of scheduling a CIGR Committee meeting of the whole in October for discussion on updates regarding the facilities modernization prod plan. Easy to say. And also, for us to be able to provide feedback to the administration about what we'd like to see. Also, I did meet in regards to student wellness, looking at the policy. I'd say stay tuned for that. More to come, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I would just encourage all of my colleagues to attend the reach-out. Every time I hear it, I think of Diana Ross, "Reach out and touch somebody's hand." Make this a better... Don't sing. Don't, don't, don't.
I know, you just ruined it.
Stop. So that song will be piped throughout East High all day Monday. So I hope it won't distract the students from learning.
You won't be singing it, I hope.
No, I will not.
One other thing. I would like to also thank the administration for their response and for being part of the reach-out as well. So I would be remiss if I didn't say that, so thank you for being part of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan and the Board Governance Committee.
Okay. The Board Governance Committee meeting of the whole was held on September 22nd with a majority vote cast to convene an executive session to discuss development of the superintendent's evaluation instrument. The Governance Committee meeting of the whole will convene twice in October. First, to review and discuss individual commissioners' evaluations. And second, to meet with the superintendent. These meetings are in the process of being scheduled and finalized.
Thank you. Briefly, again, I just want to thank Bill Desler and the Board of Trustees of RIT for their great commitment to the students of the city of Rochester. Everyone heard about the RIT scholarship. That would not have been made possible without Bill Desler, the president of RIT, and also the Board of Trustees. We should also note, Superintendent, Bill Desler and his wife are also making their own personal commitment. I can't remember the dollar amount. Hundred, $150,000. That's no chump change, ladies and gentlemen. Out of their own pocket to help support this initiative. So this project, in this initiative, is not just geared towards juniors and seniors. I think it really gives hope to our kids that are in kindergarten and first grade. They can look forward and know that there is light at the end of the tunnel, and money doesn't have to be a barrier for our students in terms of getting an education. It should never be a barrier for any kids in this country. Money should never be a barrier, and I think this is just one way of showing that we won't have that. The other thing, I just want to encourage all members to, when you get a chance, to go over to school number 33, the Ryan Center. Commissioner Powell, you were on the board at the time. I was on the board at the time when this was, when the sauce, when the sausages were being made to make this Ryan Center become a reality. I want to thank the superintendent as well as the principal and Tom Kesa, the principal of school 33, Dr. Ellison and Tom Kesa for giving myself and Commissioner Williams a tour yesterday. Commissioner Williams, I'm sure you would agree, we were pretty impressed. We were pretty impressed with the facility. I mean, we were in the cafeteria. We were in the, I call it the hospital. I mean, they had a place over there that looks like a hospital. But the bigger issue here is, this really shows collaboration at its best. I mean, you got the city side with the library and the rec center, the health center. And when I say health center, I mean, I felt like I was at a doctor's office. And then the district side. It just really shows the great collaboration. And this building really can be used also as a community space. This is an elementary school, but their gymnasium is regulation size for Section 5. Am I correct in that?
Yes, and by the health center is in the district side.
It's on the district side, right. So an amazing, an amazing facility, an amazing partnership. I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks. So thank you to the facility staff for making this happen. It is a great building, and our kids deserve it. And I'll tell you, it rivals any suburban school.
Right, and the, every school, every elementary school and every high school should have a kitchen and cafeteria.
Absolutely.
The way they do.
Oh, yeah.
Really is state-of-the-art. You can actually cook.
Yeah, right there.
I just warm stuff up. So I mean, it really is, that should be the model that we should use.
Exactly.
In terms of wellness policy.
And I think that's a great, great point, Commissioner Williams, especially as we move forward with the facilities modernization and modernizing our schools. I couldn't agree more. That model of that cafeteria and that kitchen should be a model to go forward. So it's a great school, great neighborhood, and a great principal, great partnership, and I hope we can have it continue. That concludes board reports. Any other things I have, I'll put in my Friday letter. We'll move on to the consideration of resolutions. These are all resolutions that board members got about two and a half, three weeks ago. And we had a study session yesterday, and also, there are answers to many of the board members' questions. You should have received those. If you have not, Commissioner, our clerk may have copies for you if you didn't get those. The agendas are on the web.
Not yet.
Not yet. Also, I wanted to point out also, the agendas are on the web. The resolutions will be on the web after they are approved. But we are looking forward at possibly posting these earlier when we work out a mechanism. We're also looking at going online with resolutions in January, so stay tuned for that. But in the meantime, we'll begin with Human Capital Initiative resolutions, Resolutions 199 through 233. I'll entertain a motion for Resolutions 199 to 233 for discussion purposes.
So move.
Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. These are all Human Resources resolutions, so any questions around these will have to be general. If we wanted to speak about a specific individual, we would have to go into executive session. So I'll open the floor for any questions that anyone may have on Resolutions 199 through 233.
I have just one.
Yes, Commissioner Campos.
It's actually in regards to the Department of ELL. We've got a couple of people that are here as acting director, and we also have the, or not acting, acting director of ASL. I'm just curious, has the bilingual council met with and approved the current acting director of ELL? And also, is part of it, would they meet with this person as well?
The answer is yes. In fact, tomorrow, we're meeting to talk about a process to involve the community in the final selection process.
Okay, good.
I have, I have a couple.
Okay.
And these are, again, all general. The first one on resolution... The first one on Resolution 203. It was just a, they changed the effective date. Just want to know why.
Ms. Hancock?
Sure.
Resolution 203.
203. The question was, I believe, the date was changed.
Right, the effective date.
The effective date.
You mean from our original packet that we had, Commissioner? What was the effective date in the white packet?
It was September 1st.
Okay.
Now it's August 27.
27.
Yes, we had to make an adjustment because he actually started earlier. He was coming from a different school, and we wanted to correct the adjustment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Resolution 208. Just, what's the net effect there?
We're sending to delete the probationary appointment.
Yes, this individual, this administrator, was acting as our academy director because we pulled an academy director to work with the Dream School Initiative. And so we rescinded him back to his position as an AP, Assistant Principal. So we rescinded this because the principal put in for him to become an academy director, and then it was changed.
Okay.
For him to go back to an AP position because that was his desire.
Okay. And then for Resolutions 210 to 213. Now, I just want to make sure I understand, you know, a couple of months ago, we terminated 130, whatever, teachers. Now, they're coming, some are coming back, or we're hiring.
Correct.
After all the wheeling and gnashing of teeth, I mean, it was a, what happened from that time to now where, where we're calling these people back? I mean, I, initially, when these, the reductions were done, it was supposed to, we were rightsizing the district, we had too many, too many teachers, we were downsizing, or our student-teacher ratio was one of the lowest in the state or the country. So we let a lot of people go. But now it looks as if we're bringing either all or a big portion of these people back, or some of them.
I have, you want to go to, I can talk about 211. Commissioner 211, 212, and 213. I'm not sure if you have others there that talks to this. If I can read, this was prepared for me by HCI. Resolution 211 refers to probationary teachers, and I'm going to read you verbatim. New hires within the existing budget, except for teachers needed for mandatory services, which were authorized outside the existing budget through position control forms approved by the budget office. So in other words, the teachers we have there are done within the existing budget. Vacancies caused by resignations, retirement, certification, death, and military services. So in some cases, we have had an increase in special ed students or ELL students, and we had to add those students. The third bullet for 211, this was the elementary, only hire bilingual due to shortage. All other laid-off elementary teachers are working as individual, as building subs. 12 remain on the layoff list. So today, we've been able to bring back either as a contract sub or replacing people who have left, retired, resigned, or terminated, and go back to the 170-some-what people. Only 12 individuals right now are on layoff in the district. 12, well below what we predicted.
Okay.
So for 212 with the contract subs, only contract subs go to the board for resolution, not per diem, not building subs, only contract subs. These teachers are holding existing positions for leave of absences, family leaves, parental leaves, maternity certification issues, or sabbaticals. For 213, is it a recall list you may be looking at? The recall is done by preferred eligibility list. We go back to seniority. These teachers were, with recalls, to fill existing vacancies caused by attrition. Only the reduction in forced layoffs lists in particular content areas were exhausted. Resolution 211 reflects new hires within the existing budget, except for teachers needed for mandatory services, which were outside the existing budget. Again, whenever we have kids who require special services, whether the CSE is asking it, or they require bilingual services, we have to provide them per state law. So we have to find the money. At times, it comes from even the fund balance, for instance, whatever cushion that exists, they come from those places. So we still have, we still are living within the existing budget. We predict we'll be having a number of people leaving the district over time, and again, we'll continue throughout the course of the year. But right now, we only have 12 individuals who are, were laid off on the approved list by the Board of Education who have not yet been called back either as a contract sub or to fill a vacancy that was created by someone leaving the district.
But we said layoffs would be minimal.
Minimal, exactly.
Now, I just want to make sure. So contract subs are salaried, but now are they paid how? I mean, if you call, if someone's a contract sub, even if they aren't in a classroom, are they still paid or not?
The answer is yes. They're in the building every single day. Many of these teachers are back in their school that were in, initially. If you recall, we talked about the fact that we spent on average, John, $9 million on substitutes every single year in the district. So that was an idea we had in the, in the layoff process, that we would try and bring back as many to the contract sub as possible. In the past, what we did was to hire retired teachers, et cetera, to come and be contract subs. So this was a win-win for existing, especially younger teachers who've been in the profession a short amount of time, a way to keep them engaged in the profession so as not to lose them completely to other districts in the area.
At last evening's board work session, I provided you with a substitute teacher comparison analysis, which breaks down the difference between a building sub and a contract sub. Contract subs are teachers that we hire when teachers go out on leaves of absences or parental leaves or FMLA. And they could be there for two months or for a year. It depends on each individual teacher's situation.
Well, only if there's, okay, but only if there's an opening, right?
Only.
They aren't called back, and said, okay, if something comes up?
Correctly. It's only if it's an opening and it's approved.
Okay.
Yes. Right now, what we have is a process where budget actually approves. In the past, we didn't exactly do this, but now budget final approval. If I sign off, and I personally sign off on all of the personnel forms, until I see the signature of Joyce Martelli or John Scanlon, I won't approve it. So Michelle Hancock and then budget folks. But again, just to add to the piece, outside of the fact that we look for vacancies that come up, as an urban district, as a district, if children come requiring services, we have an obligation by law, and again, by getting conscious that we have to provide those services. So wherever those exist, this is why we have, a fund balance is never high, but this is why we have that, to make those kinds of arrangements for our kids.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, yes.
So if I got this straight, there would, that would mean, you said there's 12 employees that have not gotten back yet on the payroll. Is that right?
Yes, except that many of those, we have about 30, 40 people who are contract subs. So they are, they're getting paid, they get full health benefits, they're working in school every single day, they're getting, what's the amount for a contract, about $200 a day, the contract subs?
Contract subs, they have, they get a regular salary like a regular teacher. Contract subs are regular teachers. And so they get us, they get paid what a regular teacher would get paid.
Per day, no?
I don't think it's per day, no. I don't have it on here. The race, the race here are eligible, they're eligible for all benefits, including a contract, including tuition reimbursement. So they're treated like teachers, okay?
Except they're contracted for one year.
And the contract is for one year.
Which means they have a job guaranteed to the other school year.
So they have a typical first-year teacher's salary, okay, until that teacher returns from that leave.
Well, that's good to know, because I thought I asked at the last board meeting, did they have health benefits? And I thought the answer was no.
Yes.
But the answer is yes.
No, contract, yeah.
They do have health. Okay, that's good to know. So we were down to 130 layoffs at the last board meeting. So if my mathematics is right here, and I might be wrong, so that means that there are 118 teachers were brought back.
You'd ask contract subs or to fill vacancies?
Right. Now, what, this isn't as important of a question now, now that I understand they have health insurance, but what percentage of that 118, how many of them are contract subs?
I think about 35 or 40, I believe.
So the bulk of them are?
Being brought back slowly.
I think we're confusing the different categories of substitute teachers here, if you don't mind my saying.
No, no, no.
You have per diem teachers who are...
And you handed out that chart yesterday.
Yes, and that's why I provided the chart, so we can define the difference between the different categories of subs. The per diem subs are subs that are day-to-day subs, and they do not get health benefits. But definitely, with every other category, long-term subs, building subs, and your contract subs, they get the medical benefits.
Okay. So my question is, of the 118, how many of them are per diem subs? Because the per diem subs are the people who don't have the benefits and stuff, right?
Of the 118, what 118, excuse me?
Well, okay, I was told that when we were last here, there was going to be 130 layoffs. As a roundabout figure. I was told today, we hear, that there are 12 people that...
Approximately 12.
Approximately 12, right. So that, in my numbers, that leaves us with 118. And I'm trying to break down what type of employees make up that 118.
What type of employees make up that? Some of them were recalled, when you look at the list from the board resolution that says recall for the preferred eligibility list, those are people who were recalled that were on that list, okay? That list, they have been recalled into...
Regular teachers.
Into regular teachers' positions. What Jean-Claude is saying to you, excuse me, Superintendent Bazzard is saying to you, is that we have recalled the majority of teachers back because of attrition, because things have happened. We are a moving target in this district. People decide to leave Rochester, whatever. But most of our teachers have been recalled to fill existing vacancies within the budget, or if it has been mandated services because our children have been classified, we must hire folks to fill those positions.
You know, it might be easier to get than accounting, because it's hard to, because should we have, do you have any at all in the August resolution, or this is the first time this is appearing? The recall list?
This is the first time it is appearing this month, because all during September, that's when all the activity, late August, September.
So when do we get, when do we get an accounting of the 130 that were approved by the Board of Education?
I have the list of all 170 people and why they are placed and where they are, and I can give you the comments and the rationales for that.
That would be great.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Any other questions on these resolutions, on this 199 to 233?
Yeah, one, on Resolution 220, just a, page 19, that's the, it's not so much a HR question, but for the program in question, we give them X amount of dollars, whatever it is. This is Resolution 220, page 19. It's...
Cheryl Holloway?
Yes.
Could you please come to the podium?
Resolution 220, at page 19, right at the bottom.
Resolution 220 is on page 17.
Well, yeah, but the, it goes to, it goes on.
Oh, page 19?
Yeah, page 19, right at the bottom, the last one at the bottom. Just want to make sure I understand. We give this program X amount of dollars. I can't remember what it was, you know, in past resolutions, we've given them money. Okay? And, so we're giving them money, but now we have, they're using our teachers, which we pay. We pay our teachers coming out of budget. So my question is, what's the, what's the value added of this particular entity? Why can't?
Let me start that one. Because this comes up, this came up last year, I'm just texting because this actually upset me, because we had the same issue last year, and I've asked my staff, I love my staff, but I'm a little upset right now, because this is not a quaday program, this is a school-nine program. Quaday is there as part of the extended day program. So the way this is worded, it appears to be a quaday program that we're funding.
This is school four.
School?
This is school four.
Four, okay, Karen, I'm sorry. I always confuse the Jacksons, sixes. It's okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Jackson.
But this is not, we provide some, we provide supplemental funding commission to quaday for extended day. The teachers we pay here are not for, they're part of the program, but it's the school's program. So the way this is worded, in other words, it appears as if we're buying teachers extended day for quaday. And this is for the school, but quaday is part of the extended day program. They work in collaboration with quaday for a program that goes to like 7:00 PM.
Okay.
So it's just a wording, again, and this is the second year in a row, my wonderful colleagues. Please fix this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on these resolutions? This pack of resolutions, 199 through 233? Okay.
One more question, just in regards to 222. The response to the, to my question was almost there. In terms of the school health index, the reason why I was asking this is because I remember when we had our presentation, it was talking about how important it is to get to the student level in regards to the school health index. And so my question was, what's the goal to expand to this? To expand this program, because it's currently at five secondary schools? And so it says that the plan is to extend it to the others. My question is, is there a game plan as to buy when? Thanks, Marilyn.
Commissioner Campos, a more detailed response I'll have to give from Carlos Coto, but this is part of the Carol White PEP grant, and it is a long-range commitment. It is a three-year grant that the district has received, and it includes several elements, a coordinated school health team at the selected schools. It is designed to focus on grades nine and 12, I'm sorry, nine and 10 at the six targeted schools. And as part of that focus, wellness plans will be developed for ninth and 10th grade students. But beyond that, I'll have to get more details from him. But it is a long-range commitment from the district.
I remember, I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if there was any, if we were going to look at further developing that for the other secondary school buildings, because it's such a key component. So based on the presentation that Gladys and their team gave, it truly hits at the root of the issue.
It does.
So it's not about voting on this particular resolution. I just wanted to see.
And it is also part of the process, I believe, that Mr. Fenton is convening regarding looking at the overall approach to wellness policy. Okay.
All those in favor of Resolutions 199 through 233? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say...
Oh, I have an abstention.
Okay.
211.
Okay, one abstention on 211.
It is my cousin, one of the people in 211.
That's pretty far removed. You don't have to abstain on that, but if you want.
I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Any of those? Any others? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. We'll now move on to Resolution 236 and 237. 236 and 237, our educational facilities resolution. May I have a motion to approve Resolutions 236 and 237?
It's moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President White. Questions on 236 or 237?
The only thing on these, and this is just my, my, is the fact that we still haven't come up with a resolution, with a solution yet in terms of these change orders.
I'm still waiting for you guys.
Well, that's...
I'm still waiting for a proposal from you all on this change order thing.
Oh, okay.
And I'm, and I'm...
In that case...
And I've been waiting for this, we've been waiting for a long time.
Okay, well, in that case, you'll get one.
That was my question to you last year.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, I mean, we've been talking about this, what we should do in terms of the process, and I'm waiting, I'm, I mean, I'm anxious to hear from, so...
We should note, Commissioner, that we're much more experienced than some with this kind of process, because we're a larger urban district, so, but I don't know you have concerns about that, would love to see policy drafts.
Okay.
I've also been in dialogue with Joyce about alternate ways that we can approach this.
Okay, so I mean, anytime, I'm definitely willing to hear and work on anything we need to do to clarify, because I know something we've been talking about for a couple of months, a couple of years, actually, so. Anything else on 36 and 37, 236 and 37? Hearing none, it was moved in, seconded, so I'll call the question on 236 through 237. All those in favor of 236 and 237, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, now we're on 234...
Oh.
I'm sorry, student advisory vote, what was your advisory vote? I thought I heard you say yes.
No, I'm kind of tied over here. Um, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we actually went backwards, but now we're on 234 and 235. May I have a motion to approve Resolutions 234 and 235?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campos. Any questions or discussion around 234 and 235?
Just on 235, there was a, the question that came up, I think Commissioner Campos put in the question in terms of these overall supplies, and they are not, these were not the scanners and health devices, there were the...
Well, this was my question.
Oh, that's your question, okay.
Badges, the cards, the lances. Okay. The lanyards.
Okay.
Mine think alike.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Powell, you said they were the, say that again?
Your badges, the plastic holders, the lanyards. Slips.
Okay, thank you.
There was, well, in there also, because there was a, the answer came back, it was a proximity card, I think the term was a proximity card, meaning, is this for employees or students or both?
Yes, sir. It's your badges.
Ah, okay, okay.
Unlock stores.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else on 234 and 235?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, student rep, what is your advisory vote?
C.
Okay, Gladys Santiago. All those in favor of 234 and 235, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gladys always says C whenever she's voting yes.
I hate pass a lot.
We will now move to Gladys, to, to, Resolution number 238, which is Scientific Learning Resolution number 238.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second, and the schools are listed that will benefit from this. Any questions on Resolution 238? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The nays have the same privilege. Any abstentions?
I'm gonna go with sign language for this one.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Resolution number 239 through 2...
71.
71. May I have a motion to approve Resolutions 239 through 271?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
Well, there's one that I'd like to have discussion on, but can we do it in executive session, which is 260?
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand why executive session would be appropriate. Could you elaborate on that?
It involves a certain individual.
Okay.
That's why, I mean, that's, at this point, all I don't want to, or something I need to, just to find out.
Okay. So Commissioner Williams would like to vote on Resolution 260...
Since I made the motion, could I ask that we revise the list of resolutions in question to set that aside?
Okay, so that's fine, is that, the person that seconded it, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that means that we will vote on Resolutions 239 through 271, with the exception of Resolution 260. Any other discussions on Resolutions 239 through 271, with the exception of Resolution 260?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
This came up last night on Resolution 240. That's those Erie One Bowsies. I just wanted to find out or get more definitive answer, because the question came up in terms of why is it that we haven't developed that expertise? And my understanding is that we are making headway.
Yes, Commissioner, we don't have a data warehouse in this district, this is a requirement for us to submit, this is the way we submit our data to the state of New York for ELA math graduation rates, all of the standardized data by which we are judged in terms of accountability for New York State. So Erie One Bowsies actually holds and processes our work for us as a district.
This came up in the Finance Committee, the real issue is we cannot be our own data warehouse, we're not allowed to be our own data warehouse.
Anything else on, Commissioner Williams, on 239 through 271, except 260?
Yes, there is, on 266. On that one, I was, well, first of all, for this, what is the number of students that we're transporting under this resolution? In terms of, when we put it together, what are the assumptions?
This is the Regional Transit Service Incorporated Resolution, AKA RTS.
Uh huh. Yeah, there's a list of schools, and as of the Finance Committee, I guess it was last Thursday, the student count was 11,467.
And that, my calculator, it comes to...
892 a student, based on the, if you pull the summer school out of that, summer school's about 330,000 of the 10.5 million. So the actual September to June is 10.2 million.
Okay.
I can give you the exact number, it's 10,237,291.
Okay. Now, on this, I was trying to find the resolution from last year, but I couldn't find it.
You won't find it.
Okay.
This is the first year it's gone before the board. It's kind of an anomaly in that, I guess, three, four years ago, the district went to public transit, might have been longer than that, and it's described as a subsidy agreement, which is essentially an agreement of scope. RTS runs the public buses, and our students can get on them. This, this is an agreement between the district and RTS that we're going to essentially buy fares, certain number of students, certain schools, but it never came to the board. So, you know, it's a $10 million contract, we thought it would be appropriate to bring it to the board this year, so this is the first year you're seeing it.
But then, what, the district had transportation, well, provided transportation to high school students on RTS last year, the last school year also? Because I remember them coming to the board with a presentation.
Yeah, but they've been doing this since like 1996. But there wasn't a board resolution last year.
There was none?
I don't believe there was. It's never been once since 1996.
The presentation had to do with a lawsuit, actually, much more than...
But then, on an apples-to-apples basis, what was the cost last year?
I can't tell you that, I'll get it for you, though.
Okay.
Was it like 8 million? Well, you mean the total cost for the contract? Last year, I thought it was like 9.7 million, but... I can get you the exact number for the, the total contract or the cost per student?
Well, well, both.
Okay, I'll get that for you.
Because I just want to get a feel for, in terms of, is it, is it higher, lower, or what?
What's cheaper than yellow bus? It's cheaper than yellow.
Yeah, cheaper than yellow bus, but I mean, for, but last year, for the students, for our students, I mean, what, who cares this year?
Remember last year, we were negotiating with RTS right up until I thought it was October or November, and we asked them to discount their total contract, and I can't remember the exact number, it was like 300,000 or something like that, they discounted the total contract. So I'll look at where we ended up for the year and the total number of students, the only difference in students is Charlotte, which is about 1,000 students, so I'll get you those numbers.
Okay, because here's why. I mean, we talked, when we talked before, you were saying that we would save X amount of dollars in transportation costs. I don't know whether that included, don't know whether that included this contract or not.
Well, it does, in that, this, this kind, just take the Charlotte piece, because that's the only thing that's different between last year and this year, about 1,000 students. The difference between the yellow bus cost and this cost is about $1,000 a student. So $1,000 times 1,000 students is roughly the difference between Charlotte and RTS. Charlotte last year, yellow bus, RTS this year.
In each time, I believe we've moved a school off of yellow, the high school, we've saved approximately a million dollars.
Mr. President, I just want to state for the record that Mr. Fenton presented this all to us a week ago, and if Commissioner Williams would agree to come back onto the Finance Committee, he would not only hear all of these things, Mr. Fenton would be that much better prepared, because he'd come with more documents, because they're specific just to the Finance Committee resolutions. And if there was a question Mr. Fenton didn't have the answer to a week ago, he would certainly have that answer for you by today.
Okay. Anything else on these, Commissioner Williams?
Here with the ones, 260, yes, thank you, Mr. Fenton, Resolution 263. One, sort of, you know, what is it, how effective is it?
I guess my folks who are point people for this are not here right now, but Art Piece used to be at East High School, just moved to School Without Walls commencement. Art Piece is a program that works with students who are at risk, and does a number of different things, including literacy through the arts program. We've been looking at its efficacy for the past two years, setting benchmarks for them, I don't have those in front of me, of course, we certainly can give you a full report if you'd like, but this is a program that was, at least, just moved to, to an agreement, moved to School Without Walls commencement.
Okay.
Any other questions on Resolutions 239 through 271, with the exception of 260, which we're taking executive? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of 239 through 271, with the exception of 260, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
I have two abstentions, 261 and 262.
Okay. And I abstain on 243 and 244. I'm a board member of Catholic Family Center. We'll now move on to Resolutions 175 and 187.
Yes, Mr. President, because I was one of the dissenting members, I'm asking that these two resolutions be reconsidered.
You move them?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President White. I would just note that one of these is for a, so we can provide tutoring services to, um...
Reading teacher.
A reading teacher, I believe, to students that...
Disabled.
That are disabled, and it's also grant money.
And it's reprehensible that it couldn't pass last month.
Any other questions or comments on any of these two resolutions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain. We'll move to Commissioner, I think we have one gift resolution, our resident gift person is Commissioner Powell.
I'm gonna let you do it, because I'm not exactly sure where it is in the bag.
All right, it's Resolution number 267, Arts Chemical donated $6,000 to replace curtains in a gymnasium at the school I am the liaison to, Theodore Roosevelt School Number 43, where Ann McAndrew is the principal. She's still the principal over there?
All right.
Yeah, Ann McAndrew is the principal. Okay, good. I will entertain a motion to move into, before we move into executive session... All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Richardson, we called your name earlier to speak, you weren't here, but Vice President White pointed out that you just came in a little while ago, so if you still would like to address the board for three minutes, I'll give you that And then we'll move into executive session to discuss Resolution number 260.
Thank you, President Evans and the board. The reason I was not here, I was trying to attend a parent meeting down at Franklin School. I was informed today, late in the afternoon, when I called the principal down there, and he said he had spent out letters and everything, they're having a meeting tonight. And as you know, I've been barred from the school, although he told me, the legal department was sending me letters, and the month has gone by, and nothing has happened. So I decided to go down, because there are going to be a lot of parents there. I couldn't find where it was, because he didn't tell me where I was, they were going to have it in a small conference room on F floor, and guess what happened? I guess a couple of students showed up. With the incidents that are still continuing to happen in that school, my question to the board is, when can we do something to get parents involved? Now, I'd like to have somebody, Mr. White, if you could, find out what it costs with Title I monies to spend to put this meeting together, it was supposed to have been last week, but because of the gun problem down there, they didn't have it, the evacuation, but they had it tonight, and I don't know how many people were ever notified. And this is an ongoing thing. We have so many people that want to be mentors in that school, which they desperately need. I'm getting a report back tomorrow from the Learning for Life, through scouts, they're going to show on Franklin, they're going to get you a report for all the schools, but I will have the one for Franklin tomorrow, what these young people want to do. And as my suggestion was before, is number one, we ought to be testing these seventh graders coming in this year, surveil, what is it they want to do, to make sure they're in the right schools. And the other thing is, they appear, and I don't have these reflect, but it appears there's a lot more people that are coming out of jail, that's the school they're going into. And it ought to be a special program for them, because I'll tell you what, it should be saved. But I know, if we get the students and the parents going, that school is going to be one of the top schools again. But that's the type of cooperation you need from the community in that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. So moved. There a second? Second, all those in favor, all right. We will move into executive session. Anyone is welcome to stay if they want, we'll come back out and vote on Resolution number 260. But in the meantime, we'll probably come back up here. But in the meantime, we will announce the next meeting, which is October 22nd, 6:30 PM, but I would encourage everyone to attend the Reach Out in Touch event.
Nobody said nothing about touch. Don't touch.
Although, make sure your hands are clean, because of the swine flu.
What time is it?
And that's at, Commissioner Campos, 6 o'clock?
6:30.
6:30 at East High School next Tuesday.
Is your robo-call?
Yeah.
I got two.
Yeah.